Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 12th, 2024 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone, thanks for coming. Sean, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Canauer.
Canauer here.
Tiding.
Tiding's here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Waychar.
Waychar here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing here.
Verigno here.
All right, so for those of you who don't always come to our meetings and don't know the process of the planning board here in Penfield, typically on public hearing nights, of which tonight is a public hearing night, we, between 6:30 and 7 o'clock, we have a work session where we handle tabled items and any other business that is not on the public hearing agenda. So between now and 7 o'clock, we'll be doing that. If we get through that, prior to 7 o'clock, we will move immediately into the public hearing portion of the evening. And if the work session items take longer than 30 minutes, we stop, do a hard stop at 7, do the public hearing, then go back to the work session. We have five items on tonight's agenda. Two are sketch plans, which are informal concept applications. They're not actually official applications, but more conceptual ideas that an applicant may have for a proposed development. As such, they will not have the level of detail that an actual preliminary final application will have. So with those two applications, just keep that in mind. And then we have three preliminary and final applications. We also have minutes. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review them. And can I entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Tiding, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canauer.
Canauer, aye.
Tiding's.
Tiding's, aye.
All right, one more thing. If anyone wants to, do we have slips of paper up there for speakers? Okay, if there's an application that you'd like to speak on, and when we open it up for public input, the table right inside the door, there's some slips of paper. If you could, if you wouldn't mind, you don't, not forcing you to do this, but if you could, it makes things easier for us. If you can fill out one of those slips of paper and then pass it on this direction, it'll end up in front of me. And then when that time comes, I can, I may butcher your name, which I apologize for in advance, but anyway, that seems to work well. Doug, why don't we start down the tabled applications?
Okay, so we only have one tabled application. It's 47 Willa Pond, the sketch plan. At the last meeting, the board had a few additional items. They wanted to add to the
Incorporate in.
Incorporate in, replacing trees and kind, and just some language cleanup. Staff has made those changes and provided a
Can you speak into the microphone, Mark?
Hey, Brian, is my mic on? Okay. Yeah, so at the last meeting, the board had a couple of additional items. You wanted worked into the sketch letter. Those changes were made, and a new sketch letter was circulated. If you guys are comfortable, staff has completed all the requested changes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board before we send this out?
No.
No.
All right, somebody want to move to send it?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canauer.
Canauer, aye.
Tiding's.
Tiding's, aye.
All right, and we have one new business item for the board. This is from a previously approved application, the YMCA Early Learning Center. Post approval, we've been working with the applicant regarding location for the cross-access easement between them and the property of the south. They've provided a revised easement layout showing the cross-access easement along the frontage of the property. They did provide, in addition to the easement documents, or the easement survey, an aerial map showing its location overlaid on the property, as well as sort of a conceptual layout with the property of the south to show how the cross-ass, cross-access easement would work with any potential future development. Staff did go out and conduct a site walk to show, to see where it was, and are comfortable with the location.
Okay, so engineering's good with this?
Yeah, we walked it. They might, you know, if it comes forward, we might have to take a couple trees out, but
That's my big concern.
It's only two trees that we see that probably would have to go away, but otherwise, you could, you know, the road, the access road would be able to go through the other Japanese cherry trees, and then the property to the south. Most of those trees along the property hedgerow are probably dead, dying ash trees that really have no significant value, so.
In drafting the easement document, one of the things that I intend to add is, now that we know that it looks like there might be two trees that have to be removed, is maybe some language that if trees have to be removed, that they're replaced by, you know, the party putting in the road. They'd have to work with the why as far as where they would be placed, but, you know, you're not going to be able to replace them with the same age, but at least there'll be new trees there, so that, you know, the same kind of ornamental trees.
Yeah, I guess that's my biggest concern with this, going through the front.
There's still a fairly large stand of trees, so the, if you're looking at the image there, right sort of where the cursor is, there's a large stand of trees. There would be the two closest to, it'd be the two closest right there that would probably be removed. So there would still be several layers of trees in front of it, so it would still provide a fairly adequate buffer, visual buffer.
Yeah, I mean, I will say, I was surprised that they proposed it in their front yard. But, you know, main concern with that is we've had 20 years of those trees growing, and it looks nice, and I really don't want to lose that. But if you guys are good with it, and you think that that's not going to be an issue.
I mean, I think it provides a path that, you know, for the board to, you know, have the access that they're requesting, and it's minimum to the trees. It is two trees, but it's, it could be, you know, worse, I guess, and
Right. Any other comments from board members?
No, it looks like it's in compliance. It's just, you know, out front.
Right. Kelly, Jim, any comments? Okay. All right, do we want to move to accept this condition? Do we need to move to accept the condition?
I think it would be a good idea to accept the location as proposed to satisfy the condition.
All right. Somebody want to move that?
Jim did.
Did Jim? Do we have a second?
I'll second. Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canauer.
Canauer, aye.
Tiding's.
Tiding's, aye.
Okay.
So I'll be in touch with their council about the finalizing the language of the easement, but I think they can probably contact staff tomorrow and find out what they need to do from engineering standpoint.
Okay. All right, that's all the items that we have to talk about in our work session, correct?
Correct.
All right, so as I mentioned earlier, once we get through our work session items, we'll move directly into our public hearing portion of the meeting, which is now. And we'll start with our sketch plan reviews. The way the process works for both the sketch plan and the actual public hearings, applicant will come up to one of those two tables and present their idea, you know, proposed development to the board. Once they're done with their presentation, the board members will ask questions that we have of them, and then I will open it up to the audience. And like I said, there's these slips of paper, if you'd like to speak. And not absolutely necessary, but these are the first ones that I will go through. Once I call you up, if you could go to whichever table is empty, grab a chair, speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you, as well as the millions watching around the planet on our streaming services. And please state your name, your address for the record, and then address your comments to the board and not to the applicant. So with that, Doug, would you please read the first sketch plan review item?
All right, sketch plan review one. Bowler Engineering and Landscape Architecture, NY LLC, 70 Linden Oaks, third floor, Suite 15, Rochester, New York, 14625. On behalf of Chick-fil-A Inc., request an informal discussion before the board with the proposed Chick-fil-A restaurant and associated site improvements to be located at 2051 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. The properties now are formerly owned by No Look Landing LLC and Zom Limited Business LB. Application 24P-0018, SBL 125.17-1-9.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Is this on? Just want to make sure.
Should we try talking?
Testing.
Get right up close.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Charles Gottlieb. I'm from the law firm of Whitman, Osterman &amp; Hanna in Albany, New York. I'm land use counsel for Chick-fil-A. Here this evening with Randy Beebaut, our project engineer from Bowler Engineering, Amy Dake from Passero Engineering, who is our project traffic engineer, and Zach Middlebrooks, a representative from Chick-fil-A. The proposed Chick-fil-A is approximately 5,397 square feet with associated drive-through, off-street parking, lighting, and infrastructure. It is in the limited business LB zoning district. I believe I'm a new face to this, but I understand we're here to continue the sketch plan review. You know, we look forward to your comments and wrapping up the sketch plan review process whereby we can then submit a fully, full package site plan and conditional use permit package request to this board. At this time, my job hopefully is done. I'm going to hand it over to Randy to walk through the plans and also the most recent response to comments that we have submitted. Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, Randy Beebaut with Bowler Engineering. So I'll just kind of walk through the site plan. So site is located at 2051 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. Existing building, former gymnastics building is about 20,000 square feet. We're looking to demolish the existing building, demolish all the existing asphalt, and really just scrape the site clean and start over. As Charles said, it's 5,397 square foot restaurant. We're proposing three lanes of drive-through. Proposing three lanes of drive-through with approximately 108 parking spaces. That number has changed from the original submission with the addressing the PRC comments because we've added the stub for the north, the future driveway to the north for the future connection. And we have shown a proposed access easement for that. So coming in off of 250, we're using the existing plaza driveway. Part of the modifications include modifying that existing access into that parcel. The idea there is by pushing that back, that the, we provide some stacking at the intersection. The tan area there, that is a, would be a raised mountable concrete island area to allow for the delivery trucks. And then as you enter into the site, we'll have signage guiding people to the back nor, or east-west, east-west access lane to kind of encourage people to, that are entering the drive-through to use that farther lane. And then they come around and take the left and enter into the drive-through lane. We have about stacking enough for about 36 to 40 vehicles, sort of in the, in the tan area, which is the concrete area. So that, that number is sort of contained without, you know, backing up into the, the two access drives. We are showing attached, actually, excuse me, they're not attached. We're showing the canopy at the ordering point, and then a canopy at the pickup. So the, the purpose of the canopies is to provide protection to the team members that will be taking orders at the order point. And then the team members will be coming out of the building. There'll be a door coming out of the building and actually serving, delivering the meals to the, to the customers. We're showing a patio, patio area on the backside with about six tables. That's sort of an approximate layout. We'll get a final design from the architects. We're showing a new pedestrian connection to the sidewalk along 250, and that pedestrian connection really continues all the way through the site, through the front of the building, across the drive-through lane, and then continues on out to the property line. The idea behind that, that was discussed in the pre-app meeting, that people from the park may end up walking over to the facility. And of course, the July 4th events and other events are held there. There is no defined path there today. There is a set of steps there that we, that was one of the questions in the comments that we intend on removing. They don't really lead to anywheres. Where we put the pedestrian access to the park was really the, I'll say, the flattest part of the site to get it to the park, where if that's any further north, the slope of that gets really steep. And from utility standpoint, we have obviously existing services to the facility that's there today, but we would be doing new services to this building. Water is located along the frontage road, and then sewer is sort of in the back corner. Dumpster enclosure is located in the northwest corner, and that sits just outside. There's an easement. You can see the easement lines there that run north and, north and south. That's for, I guess, future sewer and storm connections. And then back to the, so this is kind of just the general overview of the site layout. We think it's a pretty good circulation. It's pretty simple, easy to traverse through. We are doing, there is a slight increase in green area is with the redevelopment of this site, given the changes. The existing vegetation that's along the north property line, and of course, along the park, we wouldn't be modifying any of that. We'll be maintaining as much of that as we can. We have existing vegetation to the south between the developments. That is intended to stay. So our focus on landscaping when we get to that point will be, you know, providing some plantings internal to the site, and then along the frontage. There was a question about the island right, the island just north of the entrance there, about that being landscaped. The reason that that's not landscaped is the delivery trucks, when they come in, are going to, would end up, they need that open to circulate through the site. And I was talking about the hatched area that's to the north of the building there on the, yep, right there, that hatched area just to the north of that. So the trucks will come in, and they'll circulate through the, through the parking lot. And those deliveries are done usually in the middle of the night, so there won't be any cars, so that they'll come in and they can circulate around and get back out. That's the overview of the site. For the access drive on the 250, we have Amy here from Passero. We can talk about any traffic questions, but we did submit a traffic study, not part of the sketch plan, but we have submitted that to the town and to the DOT. We have not got feedback yet from the DOT, but the result of the traffic study was that we do need a signal at that intersection to maintain acceptable level of services. So that has been shown on the plans. We know one of the comments was pedestrian crossings at that intersection, and we'll certainly get into that detail as that progresses. Operationally, the site, typical operation hours are going to be 6:30 in the morning till 10 o'clock at night. Deliveries for the food would be approximately five times, up to five times during the week. We'll have refuge pickup. Again, that's typically once a week and done in off-hours. Chick-fil-A will employ about 60 to 80 part-time construction jobs, and then that, the duration of construction would be about six months. The number of team members that would be hired for this facility will range upwards of 125 full-time, part-time people. The facility would be run by a local operator that is selected by Chick-fil-A. Typically, they live in the community. It's not somebody that lives outside of the community. So it's, you know, they take a lot of pride in running that operation. And then I think with that, I've kind of covered the outline, and I don't, if you want me to go through any of the responses to comments, I can do that, or if we want to just sort of open it up for dialogue, we can answer any questions the board may have.
However you want to do it, I'm assuming most of the comments are
Yeah, they were
fairly technical and
Yeah, the comments we got from PRC were very straightforward. We've, I think with the revised plan, we really addressed most of those. There's a couple items that, you know, we responded and said, well, you know, we'll look at as we proceed. I know one of the comments was a question about land banking parking, and I guess we just, our response to that was we would defer until, a little later down the road, until we get an assessment of the required parking count, once we have a more defined floor plan.
Okay. Before I turn it over to someone else here, variances?
Yes. Yep, we will. We are anticipating some variances related to the drive-through canopies. So the, the one on the east side, sort of the front, along the frontage requirement is 80 feet. We're at 67.7 for that. The canopy, the meal order canopy on the south side, that is, side setback is 20 feet. Our proposed setback is 7.8. We have a question on whether we'll need a variance on the number of parking spaces, so that's still to be determined. And then maximum lot coverage is required to be 65. We're at 89.7. And I would just note that currently that's at 95.7% lot coverage. And then corresponding the minimum green space of 35% required, we're at proposing 10.3. And again, that's an increase of 4.3 existing. And then we do anticipate variances for signage, what, with what the elevations that we submitted. We're proposing signage on the north, east, and west, or, excuse me, the north, south, and east faces of the building. And we did submit the building elevations. The building that's, the elevations that were submitted is consistent with what was previously submitted to this board on the, on the other project.
Okay. All right. Jim, you want to start off?
Sure.
Good evening. Good evening, Jim.
So you mentioned the, the hours. How many days a week in operation?
That would be Monday through Saturday.
Six days, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any chance your draftsman ran auto turn around the site for large trucks and the town's largest fire apparatus?
We, we ran the truck, yes. We have a turning template that we can provide to the town for the tractor-trailer deliveries, and we can work with the fire marshal and confirm the vehicle, and then we can show those turning movements.
Okay. We did take a quick peek at the previous application, a little further down the road, the size of the building, the number of spaces, which is surprisingly fairly consistent with this new sketch application, even though it's a little bit of a smaller building. But we have a little more real estate to work with. You mentioned maybe upwards of 40 cars stacking in the queuing lanes. And of course, we're going to have some, some cars entering the site after they get off of the, the 250 entrance onto the service road, and then 108 spaces. So you're looking at about 150 plus or minus? Does that sound about right?
In total, yes.
Okay. So I'm going to ask your traffic consultant in a few minutes, just to verify for the audience that that's approximately the number that was used here. So the one difficult thing that I see with this plan is we've got three drive-through lanes. The two southernmost lanes merge together, so we've got two lanes exiting, and then they're going to essentially make a U-turn. Well, as they're moving past the pedestrian delineated accessway, that drive lane that you see that's parallel with the building shows two-way traffic. So essentially, it appears as though you're thinking that any number of the people parking in these surface lots could actually come down and conflict with the two lanes of traffic that are, that have just picked up their food and are, and are leaving, and all of that appears to be merging through that 25-foot lane, going in two different directions. So that, that doesn't seem to, to work for me. So the, the two things that I, I guess I would like to ask is, number one, is, is that your intent, or is it possible that we could eliminate the two arrows that we currently see heading east in that drive lane, so that we're discouraging people out in the surface lot from coming in and conflicting with all the people that are merging into that lane to exit after they've picked up their food? Just seems like a bottleneck in that location.
Are you, so you're suggesting that cars that are parked would go to the west to leave? Is that, am I understanding you correct?
Well, I'm, I don't like to suggest, to any, to any consultant, how to solve a problem. I, I see a potential for bottleneck here, so I'm, I'm asking you, it's a sketch plan application, but, and the other thing is, obviously, whatever you choose to do with this, there, there needs to be some, some robust traffic calming measures in that area to make sure that signage, striping, maybe, you know, some raised areas, I don't know, whatever you come up with, but something that would prevent a conflict in that area.
Yeah, and I noted that, so at, right before that pedestrian crosswalk, of course, we'll have pedestrian crossing signs, but we're also, again, trying to encourage the incoming drive-through traffic to head to the north drive lane, just to really minimize the, you know, the amount of vehicles that are entering in that southern drive lane in front of the building, minimize the conflicts. I mean, we can't force people to do that, but we're going to encourage people to do that.
Some, some, some striping and arrows and things can, can certainly go a long way towards that. And of course, if you've got all these people that are coming out, heading east down that access aisle to exit the site, people are naturally going to want to avoid that and go around the loop anyhow. Just something that looks like a bottleneck to me that I think you should consider maybe taking a harder look at.
Okay.
So I'll just add one note that might add some reassurance to the issue. Throughout the process, we'll be submitting a traffic management plan, like a grand opening plan, and whereby team members are stationed throughout the site to guide traffic during busy, busy periods to mitigate busy, busy periods, to mitigate that bottleneck during high, high-volume times. So that's certainly something we'll add to that plan and the mitigation going forward.
Well, to the, to the operator's credit, the grand opening plans are, shall we say, very active for this particular brand of fast food.
They are.
So, you know, we, we hope to see a, a traffic management plan that isn't necessarily just for that grand opening, because there's, there's some, there's some mayhem there for a couple of weeks or so. And maybe something that's more, you know, long-term. So with that, I'd like to ask a couple of questions of your traffic consultant, if I may. So the first one is, is the number of cars that are in and around and moving through the site, the approximate number of cars that you plugged in to your traffic analysis?
Are you referring to the number of cars that are parked? The number of parking spaces provided?
That are coming in and out of the site, 150 cars?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I mean, our trip generation is based on counts at actual Chick-fil-A locations. And I could tell you what those numbers are. They're on page 12 in the report. In the afternoon peak hour, weekday midday peak, we expect 197 cars to enter, 200 to exit. In the evening PM commuter peak, we expect 156 cars entering and 125 cars exiting. And then on Saturday, during that midday lunchtime peak, we expect 229 entering and 219 exiting cars.
So just for benefit of the folks that are listening here, could you tell the audience what period of time we're talking about 197 cars entering and 200 cars exiting?
Yep, yep. The midday peaks, we look, what we do is we do traffic counts during each peak period. And then we narrow it down to an actual hour. So in the weekday midday, we count from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And in the PM peak, and that's the same on Saturday, in the PM peak, we count from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And then we analyze the actual peak hour that occurs during that window. In this case, those peak hours are 11:45 to 12:45 on the weekday, 4:30 to 5:30 in the evening. And on Saturday, it's 12:15 to 1:15. And that's based on actual traffic counts at the surrounding intersections.
And, and that also factors in the, the operation for similar stores with this prototype configuration in this part of the country?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. The other question I have for you is with respect to the traffic light. Could you tell the audience what, what that traffic light will do, not just for this application, but for all the other businesses in the immediate vicinity of this location?
Sure. So that traffic light will control traffic at the intersection. It will provide a safe and equitable means for traffic to get in and out of that site at that driveway, which also provides access to the rest of the plaza to the south. It's completely connected through driveways on-site, all the way down to the Mexican restaurant. You can get all the way down to AAA, all the way through there. It'll also provide signalized access for the business across the street, the U of R business, which is, also has some cross connections to the north and south.
Thank you.
Okay. Kelly?
Yes. So along with Jim's concerns with the traffic flow, do you, do you guys have other locations in which the, the drive-through empties right out into the parking lot? Because I can see that if a kid's driving, or if someone's anxious to get in there and they're pulling into the spots directly across from the drive-through or backing out, I can see where there's going to be possibly some issues in that, just in that location, just with those several parking spots that are directly across the exit. Do you have other locations that have this kind of layout?
I, I'm certain we do. And I will, we'll, we'll go back and take a look at that and see if we can provide some examples of, of other locations. Off the top of my head, I, I don't recall exactly.
I know. I was trying to think in my head. I'm like, nope, the one in Henrietta is you drive out and there's a curve.
Well, actually, now that I think about it, this is similar to, I believe this is similar to Aronacoyt. The drive-through on the end of the building, and I want to say there's parking across the street, or across the, the driveline and the exit, is when you come out of Aronacoyt, you take a, it's, it's almost the same setup. You take a right and a right to get back out to Portland Avenue. So it's comparable to that.
And any issues with people exiting the drive-through and people backing up from the parking spots directly across from it or anything like that?
Not that, not that we're aware of. And I mean, we're, if there was an issue, we would know about it.
Yeah.
What's that?
So I believe Aronacoyt has collapsible ballards as you exit it. So it kind of guides you to making that, right to go back out. I mean, they're not going to stop a car, but they'll fold over.
Sure.
Yeah, I have seen that. We were actually at the site tonight. They did not have those out tonight, but I have been there when they've used those ballards and they've moved them around, which they will do here in the, generally in the drive-through lane. There's magnetic things in that they put in the concrete and they can, you know, close off the other additional lanes of the drive-through when it's at lower peaks, when they don't need it. So there's, they have the ability to adjust the operation of the drive-through. Yeah, actually, that's what I was thinking of right there.
That's Aronacoyt?
Yes. It's almost the same configuration.
There's maybe two, two spots.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, yeah, there might not be quite as much parking, but you're, you're coming out there, I mean, unless you're going to the plaza, you're coming out and you're taking a right and a right.
How many parking spots does that facility have?
I, I'm guessing it's probably in the 65 to 75 range. I'm just, I'm ballparking it.
So with that in mind, is this supposed, I mean, do you anticipate this being that much busier? That you need 40% more, or 40 more parking spots or more?
We can take a look at that. I mean, that would, we, we do anticipate this being.
Is it a bigger, is it proposed to be a bigger restaurant with more seating? Is it?
I think it's, we can check the square footages, but it's probably comparable.
So if it's, so if it's comparable in seating size, I guess I would encourage you to maybe let us know why that much more parking is required here.
We can, I think it's one thing we'll certainly give the, the board a compare, contrast, as well as other Chick-fil-A's in the state that are in similarly populated areas. I'm actually working on a few in, in Westchester County now that are somewhat similar to this, not yet operational, going through the process. One of the things we'll find out about Aronacoyt is when it was constructed, because I know now that COVID is hopefully a thing of the past, folks are actually coming into the restaurant more and parking more, as opposed to drive-throughs.
That was going to be another question that I had in terms of, I know, obviously, COVID made all the fast food restaurants very heavy drive-through sales. And their in-store or in-room dining, or whatever you call it, had gone way down. And that is coming back?
Slightly.
In-store or in-restaurant dining?
Yep, slightly. We actually just kind of looked into those numbers a little bit for a different project in the southern portion of the state. So it does appear as though people are coming in to dine more. But, but the ratio is still a little bit more on, on the drive-through side. One of the things that did come out of COVID was mobile order apps. So that is also something that is usually utilized in the drive-through.
I would also make two other points to support that as well. One is that this site, being at the, near the corner of Penfield Road and obviously on Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, is that those two roadways carry more traffic combined than Portland and Ridge Road up at the Aronacoyt site. So that will drive the traffic numbers up a little bit for this site as well. And that was considered in the trip generation. And also, Chick-fil-A as a model typically has more employees at their stores than most other similar fast food type restaurants. So they need the parking for their employees.
That would then lead me to believe that the Portland store would need that much more. I, I don't, I'm not trying to create a, I'm trying to understand what, what the, you know, have you found that that location is always crowded and nobody can find a place to park on a regular basis? You know, is there not enough parking?
I don't know what the arrangements for the Portland store, but they may have access to parking throughout the plaza, throughout, for their employees as well, not just right in the vicinity of their site.
Okay.
What it sounds like will be helpful for this board is if we take an assessment of operational Chick-fil-A's in the area and do a little compare.
In the area and even other locations, Ohio, Pennsylvania.
Sure.
Similar type demographics.
Certainly. And that's something we can absolutely include when we give our full planning board submission.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're good. No, go ahead.
More?
I'm good for now. Thank you.
Traffic question. Very good. And the traffic study, do they consider when that roadway comes out of Chick-fil-A there now, that they'll be merging into that lane to exit or come in with a new signal lights going, correct?
Yes.
And that, in your study, does it take into consideration all the other traffic generated from the road?
Absolutely.
Considering that there's what?
Yeah.
Other commercial locations just to the south, correct?
Yes, yeah.
An empty part, parcel, you have to be developed between your place and the other shafts, commercial locations. At one point, if they build something, office building, commercial, whatever they build over there, is that all taken into consideration?
So the traffic study looked at the existing traffic coming out of that driveway and how much traffic would potentially divert to that driveway to make the left turn out once it's signalized, because it would obviously be the easiest place to make that left turn. And then it looks at the queuing in the driveway to make sure that the proposed Chick-fil-A driveway would not be blocked. As far as vacant sites, the traffic study includes any projects that are approved or under construction. So if it's just a vacant piece of land that could potentially be developed in the future, that's not included.
But what you're saying is if there's a, an approved plan that hasn't been constructed yet, that was taken into account?
Yes.
I just thought, what about pedestrian traffic, in and out of the, you know, if people walk from other areas? Can they walk in, is there sidewalks?
So the traffic study primarily focuses on vehicular traffic. It does speak to pedestrian traffic, where there's sidewalks, that kind of a thing. And if the project does move forward and a traffic signal is constructed here, it would include signalized crossings.
Do you have spaces or plans to accommodate bike racks and scooters and other modes of transportation?
Yeah, we don't current, we're, we're not currently showing that, but we can take that into consideration for the, you know, a bike rack or something of that nature.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah. I just wanted to ask for clarification. When you exit the drive-through and turn to the east, is that area in that section just one-way? Because on the diagram, it just shows it going east.
Yeah, so that goes back to the original comment. So that driveline is two-way. It's 24 feet wide. We showed the arrow there as a means to discourage people from entering the drive-through at that point. Trying, like, if I'm going to the drive-through, we're trying to get people to go to the north so that they're not driving across the front of the store. So between the signage and that pavement marking, we are trying to discourage people coming in and turning left there.
But people could still turn left at that point?
That's correct.
Okay. Because the way it is with just that arrow, I'm thinking it may say, you know, do not enter at that south point, at least on the diagram. Okay.
That was, that was the whole point of my discussion about that, is that I think they need to take a harder look at either changing the delineation of the arrows and using other traffic calming methods to, to direct the ingress and egress, particularly at that potential bottleneck situation. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this time?
No.
All right. I would like to open, open this up to the audience. And I have, okay, first person, Carol Hoffman.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the board for hearing me out, in my opinion. My name is Carol Hoffman, with an E on the end of Carol, H-O-F-F-M-A-N. I live at 200 New Wickham Drive in Penfield. And aside from the Chick-fil-A's rampant, well-known discriminatory agenda, I know that I need to deal strictly with the traffic flow. So I will do that. I'm curious as to why the board would even consider another fast food facility when, within a few feet of that particular location, I counted them today, there are six fast food facilities. And within a half a mile beyond that, there are six more. So why would we even want to have another fast food place? I can't figure it out. I, I'd be glad to list those things if you like, but I didn't think you probably want me to do that, take that time. In addition to that, we have actual restaurants. I don't call Chick-fil-A a restaurant. I call it a fast food dive. And along with that, we have a Mexican and a Chinese restaurant, and as well as a Speedway, which offers beer, a beer cave. So what I don't understand from the way the engineer spoke, the only way that I know of to get in there, because I go to the ESL, you take a left off of there. You can't get in there from 441. You could take it, you could go in where that, where that place is that buffs up your car, but other than that, I don't know how else you'd get in besides another light. And so why would we want another light when we have one right at 441? And an eighth of a mile up, we have another light, which these people said they would have to have. Then you'd go another, less than a half a mile, you come to Whalen Road, another light. I don't, I don't see the purpose of all these lights. So I'm just really not happy with the fact that we feel that we need another fast food restaurant. I don't know why. I always took pride in living in Penfield. And in fact, just driving out here from my home, coming down 250, I went past at least six signs that said Pride in Penfield, or whatever it is. I don't have pride in Penfield when we're acting like we're a slog town. That's exactly what Chick-fil-A attracts. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Casey Wagner.
Thank you for having, having me. I think the previous discussion talked on some of the points I was going to make this evening. And one of the first pieces is if a fast food restaurant such as Chick-fil-A were to go into this location, would there be consideration of a traffic signal? Knowing how difficult it is to Knowing how difficult it is to navigate those plazas, not just coming out of that particular entrance and exit, but you're thinking about east side, west side of that road. Oftentimes, people are having a difficult time making lefts out of those plazas, whether it's to head south or north. So I think that consideration needs to be heavily weighed. Understanding that now you're adding yet another stopping point between 441 to this, this potential entrance and then Waylon and continuing north. And then with the conversation, as you continue north, you've now got a traffic signal at the YMCA. You have that mixed development use, which we don't know what the outcome of that area is between the YMCA and the harbors. You've got Atlantic. We did have a 250 corridor study that only ranged from Waylon to Atlantic. And I understand that there is yet another traffic study here. I have some concerns that there may not have been an inclusive concept. And I think that's one of the areas we need to focus on, is when we're thinking about all of these developments, we need to think about a holistic view, not just these hodgepodge of developments, right? So if we're ranging from Atlantic to 441, instead of saying, well, we're going to do a traffic signal to accommodate this thing, and we're going to do a traffic signal to accommodate this thing. Oh, by the way, let's throw one over here. I think we need to start looking holistically at what 250 is going to look like and shaped by all of these developments. Additionally, I have some concerns when you look at the sketch plan, you have that entrance. I think you all did a nice job calling out that U-turn. I work in Arundecoy. I know that U-turn situation that happens. There isn't as many parking spots in Arundecoy for that Chick-fil-A. Plus, it's a much wider drive from what I can see to exit and enter that area, because you have the Home Depot there. However, as you come south out of there, if you look, what are we going to do to mitigate the traffic that does navigate that plaza? There isn't a proposed stop sign because you've got traffic that may want to make a left into Chick-fil-A right there. You may have folks, you're going to have folks making a left to go to the exit onto 250. There's no proposal there to mitigate some of that traffic. So I have some concerns with that. When we think about conditional use exceptions and as well as this being a limited business area, you know, obviously there is progress, there is development. But the question is, are we going to continue to offer these variances in these different zoning areas just to accommodate these hodgepodge? I guess that's the word, development areas. What is the holistic view? So I implore you to consider that when you think about the variances we're giving, to allow for these developments and really look at 250 holistically instead of these individualizations. I think about what's going on at, so before I move on to what's going north of this, but you see that crosswalk there also being introduced. If you know that 250 corridor, there's actually a crosswalk even further north where the, the legacy hall or the adult, works for me, senior living is, as well as those apartment complexes. There's actually a crosswalk across 250 up that way. So I think it's right there on that map. So now you're introducing yet another crosswalk potential within that area. So again, holistic view of development in, in that 250 corridor. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Donna Spinella.
Hi, Donna Spinella, 39 Scarborough Park. While I'm here kind of specifically with respect to the Chick-fil-A project, my question, and I don't expect that you guys tonight will be able to answer this question because I think it's got a kind of an integrated solution across a lot of departments here. But my, my big question was kind of generated from Chick-fil-A, but I think it has broader implications for Penfield. I think we all agree that the best projects show a kind of a good integration between planning and zoning and engineering and the town board and so forth. And one thing that I learned from all my work on the comprehensive plan was that as a group, these entities all are not in favor of spot zoning. We just, we really, we don't like to do that in Penfield. We don't really think it's a helpful tool for very good reasons. First of all, as the last speaker kind of pointed out, if you start peppering an area that's zoned for one thing with lots of other kind of uses that are exceptions to that zoning, well, then what was the purpose of that zoning in the first place? You kind of, you kind of destroy whatever the rationale was for that zoning, whether it was character or safety or whatever it was. And secondly, spot zoning, as I'm sure you would imagine, and if you have ever listened to the Zoning Board of Appeals, spot zoning could be extremely contentious. One project gets approved, someone thinks that they have a similar project that doesn't get approved. No board of any type in any town wants to deal with that. So I think, you know, everybody's in agreement, spot zoning, not a thing for us. But variances, of course, are allowed, you know, conditional use variances like we're talking about tonight. My question is, when a project requires multiple variances, at least six that I heard of tonight in terms of the Chick-fil-A endeavor, when do all the variances in essence cross that line and effectively act like spot zoning? The spot zoning, which we try to avoid in this town, which we eschew in this town. Another way to think about it is when do the accumulate, the sort of the accumulation of variances required for a project really mean the project should be in a different zone? How is that decided? Who decides that? Are the decisions subjective, objective? What combination of entities work on that? I think that given the number and variety of enterprises that seem to be interested in locating in Penfield of all sorts, the answer to that question is going to be increasingly important to the character of the town, to traffic safety within the town and to life in this town in general. So I think we have to really work hard to develop a good solution to that so that we don't, just by granting lots of variances, in effect, do what we say we don't like to do, which is spot zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Louis Rivera.
How you doing? Louis Rivera, property owner directly to the south of the property. Generally speaking, I'm okay with this project. My main concern is with the front setback. There is a future approved building going directly to the south between the current Duncan Dona Stan's original building and the Chick-fil-A. The visibility, the way this is set up would be completely blocked, creating what I believe to be a traffic hazard for anybody traveling southbound on 250. So my request would be that the building be moved further back. I don't know if it meets the front setback. I didn't hear that there was a front setback variance. But it doesn't appear to be consistent with my building, with the ESL building, with the Starbucks and the Jiffy Loop. It sticks out substantially eastward towards 250. So I believe this is inconsistent. And to Jim's point, if you move the building further, I guess it would be west towards the park, it would mitigate that U-turn exit. Being a fast food operator in several drive-throughs, you get landscapers with long trailers. They cannot, if you, the way this plan is designed, exiting that, trying to make that U-turn with a truck and a landscape, you cannot do it without interfering with the inbound lane. It just, you can't do it. There is not enough room there with a landscape trailer to make that U-turn without interfering with the inbound lane. So my request, although supportive of the project, is that it, front setback be moved and be consistent with the existing parcels along that plaza quarter. And I, you know, I brought building plans and I can leave these here. It shows the future approved building and then where the Chick-fil-A is. You can see that it sticks out substantially beyond the approved building and the current building. So that's my only request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to keep these or?
Yeah, if you could pass them on down, that would be great. Okay, we've gotten a few electronic submissions. I guess I neglected to mention that you can submit an electronic submission by visiting our town's website. It's penfield.org and there should be a link to this meeting in which you can submit a comment. You can also call in at 585-340-8771. We have four submissions. One is from Donna Ecker at 1777 Suites Corners Road, Raymond Sienna at 15 Simone Terrace in Webster, Alex Carroll, 82 Chippenham Drive, and Mary McDonough at 28 Jacaronda Court. As I read through the comments, they are primarily concerned with traffic. These will be entered into the record as comments and reviewed. But they're echoing the same concerns with traffic and traffic studies and, and that sort of thing. So would anyone else in the audience like to comment on this application or this concept plan? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Hi, guys. My name is Karen Siprow. I live at 5 Glen Circle in Penfield. My husband and I own and operate the Penfield Pub originally was Don's originally, just recently changed our name. My issue is with parking. If they have so many employees, where are they all going to park? For one, we don't want them parking in our parking lot, obviously. Like the Arundecoy place has Home Depot, other places in the mall that they might be able to park at. Here, the only other option would be our parking lot. And during construction also, they're going to have 60 people constructing this lot. Where are they going to park? Those are probably most of my concerns because we need our parking. Other than that, I don't have a problem with Chick-fil-A coming. It might bring more business to our restaurant. People see us, you know. You know, there's enough business to go around, but those are my big concerns.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, any final questions from the board?
No.
Comments from the board?
No.
Okay. If you have a final statement, great. Otherwise, thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah, one thing I just wanted to highlight related to the variances. So I think it's really important to realize two of the variances, one for lot coverage and one for green, green space. We're actually improving an existing non-conformity related to the setbacks, the front yard and the side yard. The building itself is compliant with the front yard setback. It's that open aired canopy. Same thing on, on the side yard is the open air canopy that is close to that side yard. And one thing Chick-fil-A has done is kind of revolutionize the drive-through. And the way, how things are so speedy through the drive-through is actually having team members underneath those canopies, assisting customers, taking orders, delivering orders. So it's important to realize that those are open air under there, especially in that front yard to address that concern. And certainly we can provide more information as needed.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you for your presentation. What happens next for us is we'll be putting a letter together based on the board's comments, the town staff's comments, community's comments, give you our thoughts on the application and that should go out. Can't guarantee, but in the next several weeks.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, Doug, next sketch plan.
All right, sketch plan two, BME Associates, Ton Lefbridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of Triple Seven Panorama Properties LLC, request an informal discussion before the board with the proposed development of Lot 1 of Panorama Park for multiple mixed-use businesses and associated parking at 100 Parker Hill Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. The properties now are formerly owned by Triple Seven Panorama Properties LLC and Zone General Business GB. Application 24P-0020, SBL 138 dot 12 dash 1 dash 1.1.
Great, good evening. My name is Peter Vars from BME Associates, appearing tonight on behalf of Triple Seven Panorama Properties LLC. With me to my right is John LaFroy, one of the principals at Panorama Properties. As Doug read in to the record, we are here this evening for a sketch plan review with you for the proposed development of what is known as 100 Parker Hill Drive, which is a 5.3 acre parcel as part of the overall Panorama Park, Business Park. The property is Zone GB General Business. This lot is part of the overall Panorama Park, Business Park, as I mentioned, that received preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval from the planning board for the overall 55.3 acre park back on June 13th of 2019. And the park's infrastructure, Parker Hill Drive and the associated utilities was constructed in 2020 and 2021. The 5.3 acre frontage lot that's under consideration was created in December of 2021 with the subdivision of the Simutec Building, if you're familiar with that, that was known as Lot 2. It's located at 500 Parker Hill Drive. And the subject parcel we're talking about was rezoned to general business by the town board on, in August of 2021. And that rezoning actually took place at the recommendation of the Penfield Comprehensive Plan Committee because the update was going on at that time and it was one of a handful of parcels that they recommended rezoning. And so the town board did proceed with doing that. So the 5.3 acre parcel is located along Panorama Trail South. It occupies about 350 feet of frontage along the county highway. And it's bounded to the north by Parker Hill Drive and to the, to the west by the same. And to the east of the lot is the overall park stormwater management facility and then the westbound on-ramp for New York State Route 441. The sketch plan that is proposed is a proposed multi-building, multi-tenant commercial development, proposing seven tenants and five buildings. It would be a mix of office, space, retail use and restaurant uses. The intent of this sketch plan is to integrate the design of these various users through shared parking and shared access, pedestrian connectivity throughout that would connect to the existing sidewalk system on Parker Hill Drive that the developers constructed with the infrastructure and also connection out to the existing sidewalk system along Panorama Trail South. Traffic with trip generation for this project will be compared to the overall traffic study that was done for the park. If we recall back into 2019, there was a complete traffic impact study done for the proposed 55 acre development that resulted in the highway improvements that were constructed at Panorama Trail South and Parker Hill Drive, if you're familiar with those. But as we do with every development in this park, we take our proposed trip generations with the known users and compare that to what was projected in that 2019 report, submit those to the town engineer and submit them to Monroe County. Typically during sketch plan review, we know you like to see the initial architectural designs. We've deferred on that until preliminary site plan application because once the tenants are identified, because of the types of users here, they may have some own, some of their own specific brand designs. But our intent is, is to submit the complete architectures with a, with the formal preliminary site plan application. The five, the five building layout you see before you totals around 26 The five building layout you see before you totals around 26,500 square feet. So, that works out to just about 5,000 square feet per acre. Just to give you in context where that sits with the overall park is the overall park was designed based on 10,000 square feet per acre, that 55 acres. So, we're obviously well within the parameters of what we considered with the overall park development. The building sizes as proposed range from 2,300 square feet restaurant uses up to an 8,400-square-foot office building. The future site plan applications would identify the tenants, would identify their specific parking demands and utility needs. The layout was prepared to comply with the general business zoning, primarily which is the 80-foot front setback to Panorama Trail South. This board, when granting the overall approval to Panorama Park, we did not establish setbacks off Panorama Trail. The reasoning for that was to provide the utmost flexibility in the siting of the buildings because of the unique topography on the property. But we do provide setbacks of around, I think that on this sketch plan, the shortest setback to Parker Hill Drive is 37 feet. The project will have shared parking and access agreements. Lot coverage as proposed is 43% of the 5.3 acres, and as you know, the general business allows up to 65%. So, we're well within that parameter also. At this time, all buildings are proposed to be single-story buildings, so we have no issue with the 35-foot height requirement in the GB zone. Access to this development would be just from Parker Hill Drive. There would be no direct access to Panorama Trail South, and that is per the original traffic impact study. So, it would all be internal connections and internal circulations. We did receive the PRC comments. We did provide written responses to that, and if you did review those comments, we found to be ones that can easily and will be addressed with the formal preliminary site plan application. The main reason we're here for sketch plan is even though this overall park did receive preliminary final site plan approval, if you go through those five pages of conditions, it was very clear in there that as individual lots came in, that we would come back for site plan approval. Given the fact that this is a multi-building proposal on this lot, we opted to start at the sketch plan phase so that we could get some initial feedback before we, even though the overall approval gave us the ability to come back just at the final step. We thought it was important to do this such that then John and his team could get this feedback and then work with the possible tenants that they're working with to understand what questions, comments this board may have to incorporate that in an application. So, with that, John and I can answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. So, based on your statements, it sounds as though you have interested tenants?
Right now, they have, I would say, very three solid prospects, yes.
Okay. And I know there will be a question about office space. You know, everybody assumes that office space is, let's say, a dime a dozen now, that nobody can fill it. And then, I guess, is one question is potentially one of those tenants an office occupant?
So, yeah, the office space use is located at the bottom of the page, the largest rectangle, actually. But they have received some interest in that from a user that likes the location.
Okay. The building just to the north of that,
Mm-hmm.
What are the parking spots doing in the building?
That's one of the prospective tenants that would be of an automotive nature, of a service type.
Okay.
So, that's why. It's just to acknowledge that with the preliminary site plan application, you're going to see the same thing.
Okay.
But we'd be able to identify the tenant at that time.
I see. And that also then reflects the difference in, let's say, ground cover or it looks like pavement that's...
Yeah, that would be like, those would be concrete aprons.
Okay.
Yep.
Can you describe the, you don't have to get into specific tenants or anything, but the restaurant uses, are we talking fast food? Are we talking sit-down? Are we, what are we talking about?
Sure. So, how we approach this is using experience and the fact that there's three common restaurant groups. There's QSR, quick-service restaurants. There's fast casual. So, quick-service restaurants, Chick-fil-A, McDonald's, Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, whatever. Fast casual, Chipotle, Mo's, Panera. And then, just regular restaurants, sit-down restaurants. So, those are pretty much the three criteria. This layout's been prepared based on the applicant's work with brokers to really accommodate any one of those three, okay?
Okay.
And so, what this sketch plan shows, for instance, if we look at the multi-tenant building that has the dual drive-through lane, I think this board's been familiar enough that you've seen QSRs come through, quick-service restaurants, that, you know, they have that second lane, they have that bailout lane, so to speak. This is to show how that could be accommodated on the property. The one to the, I would say, the upper left-hand corner, that would be for maybe a possible fast casual restaurant where they just have the pickup lane or the pickup window only or whatnot. So, we just wanted, and then you have the traditional QSR or even a bank down in that lower corner. This was done primarily working with John's group so they could have the ultimate flexibility or the most flexibility in when working with brokers is saying, are you a Chipotle? Are you an Evans Bank? Are you Starbucks? Are you whatever? We can fit you on this property here.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you anticipate building everything out at the same time or one at a time as you...
The way the tenant mix is going, there's a potential that one or two of the buildings might...
Can you speak into the microphone, if you don't mind?
One or two of the buildings might actually start at the same time, but it could just be one building that goes at first. But if we get the tenants all signed up, we would do them all at the same time, too.
Any variances?
At this time, no. No.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. You heard the comment from some of the residents about the number of restaurants that we have in Penfield. So, you've got three here proposed. We won't ask you to reveal how solid your prospective tenants are. But my question for you is, in the event that you don't find suitable food-type tenants for one or more of these three buildings, are you prepared to convert one or more of those to some other use?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything saying we're married to food. It's just kind of, we want to have flexibility. I know some of the, you know, we've gotten a lot of LOI or, you know, RFPs sent to us, but only a small percentage has actually been food. Some of them have been, you know, retail, more retail-type walk-in uses.
Yeah. I guess, you know, certainly you'd have to come back before the board, you know, if you made that kind of a change. But, you know, I guess my only concern would be if you made a change to a more dense use that would require, you know, more parking or more impervious surface, things of that nature. So...
Without a doubt, we understand that, that, you know, that the preliminary site plan application is going to have more detail, more of that specific information. We're going to have to tie down those users a little bit further.
A little bit.
You know, how many possible restaurants are there versus retail space versus office space? Because we have to run through those parking calculations, knowing we have a 65% lot coverage maximum. We understand that.
Yeah, and, you know, we should probably note that this was the use that was anticipated or this type of use for this parcel.
That is correct.
Back when preliminary overall was given for the entire site.
Yeah, that's a good point, and that is also why the Town Board rezoned it to general business because the rest is zoned industrial was so that they could bring in this commercial-type use to basically tie it in with, you know, Panorama Trail in Penfield.
Right.
Old Penfield Road.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah.
Bob?
I know this is, you know, sketch. You had mentioned, Peter, shared parking. So, I would assume that's kind of in the areas, the smaller buildings, the food buildings and so forth for the shared parking.
It's two components for shared parking. One would be, you know, right now, we are not proposing subdivision, you know, subdividing lots off for individual buildings. So, thus, there would be shared parking agreements. I'm going to cover the legal side of it. There would be shared parking agreements in place that, you know, all the parking spots are free use by all the tenants, for instance. So, that's one reason. And then, the other thing is depending on how we end up with what the breakdown is, ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, does have shared parking credit calculations you can run. In other words, as John mentioned, if you have a larger component of walk-in retail with food, that the basic, you're able to apply a credit under the assumption somebody is parking and going to more than one of the businesses on the establishment. So, they don't each need their own parking space for that person because they only need one spot. But we'll walk through all that in the engineers' report that's submitted with the preliminary application if we're applying a shared parking credit.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this sketch plan concept? All right. I don't see any phone calls in the queue or electronic submissions. But once again, if you're not here and you would like to make a submission, you can go to the Penfield website, penfield.org, and make your feelings known. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Just like the first application, we'll get a letter together, give it our thoughts, and get it out to you as soon as we can.
Wonderful. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Sangster, next. Let's move on to the public hearings for preliminary and final.
Okay. Agenda item three, public hearing number one, Passaro Associates, 242 West Main Street, Suite 100, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Penfield United Methodist Church, request under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision approval to subdivide the 19.835 acres into two lots, Lot One being 0.812 acres with the existing single-family home at 1785 Baird Road, Penfield, New York, 14526, Lot Two being 19.023 acres with the existing church parking lot at 1795 Baird Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. The property is now or formerly owned by Penfield United Methodist Church and Zone Residential R120. Application 24P-0017, SBL 124.01-2-27.
All right. The floor is yours.
All right. Well, good evening, board. Thank you very much for your time tonight. My name is James Ritzenthaler with Passaro Associates, here on behalf of Penfield United Methodist.
And I'm Don Williams, and I'm here on behalf of Penfield United Methodist as well. I'm the chairman of the Board of Trustees there, and I have a very important person with me tonight. I have Pastor Kim Farrell that's in the audience with us. Welcome.
Okay, welcome.
So, yeah, again, thank you for your time tonight. We are located right down the street at 1785-1795 Baird Road. You may be aware of the church. It's actually up on your beautiful quilt up there. So, yeah, we're here tonight seeking preliminary and final approval for subdivision. The site in question is currently a 19.8-acre parcel, again, at 1785-1795 Baird Road. Currently, it consists of the existing church, supporting parking lot, and then also a two-story, single-family home with supporting driveway and septic system underneath the southern lawn of the building. Our proposal consists of splitting the parcel into two different lots, one approximately 0.812 acres in the northeast corner, as you can see on your screens, consisting of the single-family home and supporting utilities and such, and one of the remaining lands, which is just over 19 acres. This will consist of the existing church, the existing parking lot, as well as the road out to the leased cell tower parcel. No changes will happen there, and it will continue under the existing agreement. Pretty much between my introduction and Douglas's introduction there, there's not much else there to discuss. We've gotten a couple of comments from the, what was it?
PRC.
Yeah, Project Review Committee on the plan. They all just consisted of the signature blocks there. We made those revisions and resubmitted to the town, and heard back in email that there were no further comments. So, opening up to you guys if you have any questions or comments for us tonight.
Kelly, you want to start off?
Sure. I actually don't really have very many questions because it seems pretty straightforward, but you're just simply looking to break into two lots to be able to sell the one house when the time comes or...
Yeah, I don't know if...
So, it's not together.
Yeah.
Yeah, potentially in the future, but, yeah, there's nothing happening right now.
Okay. Just wanted to get it out there and get some clarification. I don't have any questions.
So, there's no actual plan to sell the parcel? You just want to, if the time comes in which you do wish to do so, you want to make it easier? Would that be an accurate assessment of your wishes?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Okay. Any, I'm assuming, but I'll ask, any variances required based on where you drew the lot lines?
No. The required distance from the septic system is a minimum of 30 feet. We're over that. Nope. No required variances, to my knowledge.
You're not creating any nonconforming situations?
No.
Okay. Any other board members have comments?
Nope. No questions.
Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? All right. Let me check our call-in log here. Nobody calling in, and nobody at the moment. Does look pretty straightforward. So, thank you very much for your presentation, and we should have a, I don't really see any problems getting this taken care of very soon. Great. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Next item?
Yep.
We're going to take, if we take a couple of minute pause for a bathroom break.
Sure.
We will recess for three minutes. Let's call it five. All right. Welcome back, everyone. We will continue our meeting with our second preliminary and final application. Doug, would you please read, read it?
Agenda item number four, public hearing two, Colliers Engineering and Design, 288 East Broad Street, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Walmart, request a preliminary and final site plan approval for the construction of a building expansion and associated site improvements for Walmart store number 1774, 1990 Brant Point Drive, Webster, New York, 14580. The property is now or formerly owned by DeMarco Brant Point LLC and Zoned General Business GB. Application 24P-0019, SBL 093.02-1-25.11.
All right.
Yeah, my name is Justin Latier. I'm here with Colliers Engineering and Design on behalf of Walmart to present our plan for a 4,000, a 5,000-square-foot expansion. The expansion is designed to help improve the pickup operations on the site. Along with that, we will be relocating the pickup parking spots to that side of the store. There will be some associated grading and utility work, some additional lighting to ensure that the spots are lit appropriately for customer safety. We will have a reduction of 26 parking spots on site, but we will stay above the parking number and, parking number and ratio as approved when the store was built.
Okay. Terry, you want to start?
Yeah. How you doing? Can you go over any of the architectural changes to the building, please?
Yeah, I've got a board. I don't know where you want me to put that. I didn't-
Okay. Is it, how do we, and this is going to sound terrible at this point.
I can grab a little of the things from the rollers from the back, or you could also have Matt pull it up on our screens, too.
But I, we'll be waiting for that. I can speak a little bit to what we're doing out on the site as far as the architectural component goes. So the expansion is a part of a full interior remodel that will be submitted to the building department. As far as the exterior goes, there's some minor repainting and swapping of sign locations. In general, we are proposing, or the architect is proposing, a reduction in sign square footage from what currently exists on site. And then we do have some, some color samples with this as well.
So, this proposed expansion is, from an exterior standpoint, limited to the north end of the building, correct?
That is correct. There's no, no other changes to the exterior of the building, structure-wise.
Structure-wise, but you are proposing to change some of the architectural features of the building?
Just the signage, because right now, you've got your pickup signage on the opposite side of the site. That's going to be relocated, as well as a change to the main logo at the front of the store. It's going to be actually reduced in size from what's out there now.
And you'll be submitting that signage, or?
Yes, yeah, and then the, there will be an architectural set to follow as well.
Okay. About the PRC comments, have you taken a look at those and addressed them?
We did not receive the PRC comments.
We have not sent out PRC comments at this time.
I'm sorry?
We haven't sent out the PRC comments at this time.
Okay.
We're still working through the plans.
Okay. So we're waiting on those, okay.
Believe me, it's my fault.
Anything else that's going to be added on the outside of the building, then?
No, it's just the signage changes, the repainting, and then the striping and lighting associated with the expansion. Minimal grading changes, no changes in drainage patterns, no increases in impervious area, and then no alterations to any other utilities on site.
They're going to be doing the asphalt around there when they do the parking spots? Because I was over there the other day checking the area out.
There, can you put your mic?
I'm sorry. There were some potholes and stuff in the area. They're going to be redoing it, as long as they're doing the striping, the, address the asphalt?
Yeah, so generally, what we do on the site plan is any area that we're regrading as a result of the expansion is going to be repainted, and then any striping changes that don't require grading will just be a seal coat. If, in the review of the plans, there's some additional areas that need to be addressed, you know, we can certainly discuss that with Walmart if there's concerns that the town has.
Definitely. I was over the other day. It definitely needs some addressing. And then the, so the pickup area, looks like doors, like one large overhead door?
It's a, it's a double door, and it's going to have a canopy on it. It's kind of right in the center of that, of that, actually, that's, this is the front of the building. We want to be on the side. Yeah, it's that, it's that middle view with those four white doors on the, on the side. Those are the proposed pickup doors.
Will they be used for like loading, bringing like tractor-trailers in for?
No, this is strictly for associates to bring the groceries in and out of the expansion to load up the cars.
So, forgive me, but the, the purpose of this, the pickup, that's, somebody orders, like goes online?
Yeah, so this is Walmart's online grocery pickup. So you put an order in on the app, someone in the store goes, gets all your groceries for you, you pull up into the parking spot, there's going to be signage to indicate what number spot you're at, and they'll bring the groceries out and then load them up into your car. So this currently exists on the opposite side of the store right now. Basically, this is part of their initiative to kind of improve those operations, you know, make it flow better within the store, and then, you know, provide additional spots for future growth over the years.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, so that's a good, as you can see right now, there's a limited number of spots on that side of the store.
What will happen to that canopy and the-
So the plan right now is that-
Improvements on the south side.
-will be removed, and those spots will be returned to conventional parking.
I see.
Are you going to add landscaping on the other side?
So-
Landscaping?
Typically, we will only do landscaping improvements if we're disturbing existing landscaping. I believe the way we've got that configured on that other side, we're not displacing either of those islands, so I don't believe that we are either removing or adding any landscaping.
There you go. I'm offsite right here.
Okay. Other members of the board?
I'm good.
Bob? Kelly?
I'm fine.
Jim? All right. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? See if we have any calls or electronic submissions. Did you want to speak, sir?
Sure.
Yeah, come on up.
Hi, good evening. Good evening.
Hello.
Jaime Sanchez, 115 Jewelberry Drive. So thank you for having, and now, this session for this evening. I'm just a little confused because it's hard to depict exactly where the expansion is to happen. Is that in that sort of northern part, number one?
Yes. Yes, so where that little rectangle juts out.
Okay.
Let's say that's the north side of the building. What's proposed is that there would be a structure that would be added to that north side of the building. So now that's, picture it flipped to the left now, and that rectangle would be the new, thank you, that new structure.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's, thanks for the clarification. When this project was initially proposed back in the fall of 19, what is it, 90, 2016, right? This is Walmart, came into play.
Wow.
We're, we're on the Jewelberry side.
Mm-hmm.
So a couple of key questions I still have. Number one, if you see the berm running or-
North, south?
Yep. This, it was in the public records, it was in the videos, it was in the testimonies from the residents, plus the agreement from the board that that was going to be, that fence was going to run all the way, the perimeter on the back. It was agreed to that was going to be finished and altered, and that essentially has yet to be completed. So I'd like to put that into the record to go back into the, you know, initial proposal, the agreement that was made by all parties, that there was going to be a berm and a fence completed, and that was not done. So if there's going to be continued expansion, I would encourage to make sure that we address what was originally planned for, because there is no fence. It finishes up, that's point number one. Point number two, there were noise levels that were submitted during that application, and I can tell you right now, living on 115 Jewelberry, you're four o'clock in the morning, you can hear the dump trucks, you know, pounding, you know, the garbage bins, et cetera. So I'd like that to be taken into consideration again, you know, because there's a lot of noise that happens in the wee hours that still, you know, occasionally you do wake up. So the question then becomes, can that be altered? Could that be moved up? Because there shouldn't be any people, you know, waking up just by, you know, the fact that the, and then in the winter, when the snowplows are going in, then that just makes a lot more noise. So I would like that to be taken into consideration. And then my last point was, you know, just trying to understand the location, but I'm good with that.
Sure. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Just really quick. So I'll let you know, if you do have issues with the noise, contact code enforcement. There is a property maintenance agreement over the Walmart parcel that was agreed to back when they were approved. I believe it does, I'm trying to pull it up here to see if I can find the actual hours. There was an agreement as part of it on hours when they could do things like street sweeping and dumpster pickup and things like that. If, if they are having issues with them, like picking up dumpsters at four in the morning, contact code enforcement, and they'll follow up to make sure that they're complying with the property maintenance agreement.
Right, thank you.
Didn't we also discuss with them delivery hours?
I believe so. I believe that was all covered. We had a very detailed property maintenance agreement.
These, these vehicles are required to have, you know, backup alarms, and, and yes, they're very loud.
Yep.
So can't do anything about snow plowing, that's-
No, you got it. But again, thank you for your consideration.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I explain the wall?
Yes.
So when Walmart was built, they were putting in that berm to, you know, put the wall on top of the berm. They had extra material, so that berm is actually 10 feet taller than it should have been. So therefore, they came back and requested that, since this is already, the berm is at the height of what-
The top of the fence?
The top of the wall, do we need to put the fence in? And, and I believe the town board granted that variance because they added extra material for the berm.
Okay.
So what you're saying, Mike, just for benefit of the neighbors, that an alternate method of buffering-
Correct.
-visual and noise mitigation was-
Correct.
-constructed, and it was reviewed by-
So that berm would have been about 10 feet lower than it currently is with a wall on top of it. But because they built a-
The berm.
-10-foot taller berm, they got approval to not put the fence in.
Okay.
And that would have been probably a condition of approval of the rezoning, which is why it would have gone to the town board.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Yes, come on back up.
The reason for completing the fence, it's not so much, you know, again, I'd encourage you to, if those videos are available, and the sessions that we had leading up to it, there was a multiple number of parties and residents and requests about making sure that that berm included a fence. It was also to risk mitigate anybody crossing over from the parking lot into those neighborhoods to make it even more safety, okay? So there has been occasions where you have had multiple parties stepping over and bound and checking into what's going on in our neighborhoods. That's our backyard, right? So if you said and requested that there is supposed to be a fence, that would also risk mitigate the safety, that's the part that was ignored. And so if-
So it's, I think you're, and I don't mean to cut you off, but it sounds like you're speaking more almost to a public safety issue-
Correct.
-than a noise issue.
Run a risk mitigate any potential situation, which was also the challenge that we posed, you know, back when the, when the expansion was happening. Again, I shop there. I have no problem with a Walmart being there today. It's more that one aspect of the fence that was supposed to be completed was not. And if there was a aspect that, well, you know, they left more dirt, let's say, than, or they put more dirt and it raised the height, it still doesn't negate the fact that there should have been a, the construct, the fence construction to, you know, because anybody can hike up that, that berm, you know? So it's more of a safety. So-
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, come on up.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. I'm Joanne Giuliano, and I'm at 75 Jewelberry Drive. So if you could bring up, yep, this graph here is, I'm right at the turn on Jewelberry, so I'm right there at 75. And to Jaime's point around public safety, just last year, I think it was, our neighbor at 79, in the dark of night, had someone come through the woods from the Walmart area and knock on their backslider door, scared their children to death, and had to call the sheriff. So, and we've also had, over the years, a number of kids cut through our development into the plaza, so I second the request from a public safety perspective. I also just have a couple questions in regards to the construction of this pickup area. So it sounds like it was poor planning on Walmart's part when the supercenter was initially designed to have the pickup on one side of the building, and now there seems to be an operational need for it to shift to the north side. So I'd like to understand how much bigger it could be on the north side versus the south side? Is it the same number of spaces? How long will construction take? Will it be any higher than the current pickup area, et cetera? Will it be any higher than the current pickup area, et cetera? So, I just would like to understand what's causing the shift of the pickup area to the north side?
Okay.
So, I don't know if they answer, or no?
We can certainly get those answers. We may be able to, can you possibly explain?
Yeah, no, I can speak to it.
The rationale for the request?
Yeah, so, you know, pickup for Walmart has kind of been an ever-changing thing. You know, evolves over time, there's a need when it starts, and sometimes that need expands. The biggest reason for the shift is that this is in conjunction with them redoing the interior of the store, and it's more of a future-proofing measure to make sure that they're able to handle future potential demand. Not that there's necessarily that demand now, but this is when they make these changes. There is going to be an increase in pickup spots over there. They will not likely all be utilized, not like they're going to all of a sudden fill up compared to the other side of the store. Construction is slated for 2025. I don't know the specific duration, but obviously, you know, Walmart and the contractor will comply with all, you know, town requirements in relation to parking and timing and the construction there. And then also, the height of the expansion will not exceed the height of the existing building.
Because that's a concern as well, is the duration of the construction, the hours of the construction, where will all the trucks, you know, sit and be stored during construction? And then also, because you do have residences right literally along the backside of this building, I would request that there's no drive-through traffic in the back of the building. If there could be signage to say, for example, you're here for your pickup, you enter from the front of the store, and you exit from the, you know, back to the front of the store to absolutely minimize any traffic in the back of the building. We are really concerned about our property value, and we've had this concern since the moment the initial application was submitted and the Walmart was put in place. We have beautiful homes, and we do not want anything taking away from the value of our property. We have no interest in more noise, more garbage, more strangers tracking through our backyards. And so, again, I just ask for all of that to be seriously considered in the design.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment on this?
I'd like a quick comment.
No, but come on up to the table.
I need to get the picture of the statement. And my name is Craig Maddock.
If you don't mind, say it again into the microphone.
My name is Craig Maddock. I'm at 119 Jewelberry Drive. And I guess I'm one of the neighbors that was there before the Walmart. So, you know, it's not like the guy moving next to the farm. The farm came to us and potentially spoiled our life. Anyhow, the concerns about the fence and the noise are all real. We've just learned to deal with it, not a problem. What I'm interested in is what kind of pickup is going on at the store for customers coming in? I'm looking at the picture, and the grocery side of the store is at the, at the bottom end of that, what I'm looking at. They're proposing moving the pickup to the far, far side of the building. Does that mean?
Yeah, so, what I think is happening is the interior of the store is being remodeled as the applicant had said, and it's possible that the, I don't know the nature, I can't speak to that, but it, from what I understood, that whole interior of the store is going to change. My assumption would be that the grocery would probably be flipped over to the north end.
I can speak, I can speak to that a little bit. So, there are not plans to change the grocery location in the store. What happened was, when they do these expansions, there's a particular square footage based on the demand that the store has, that they like to have for that expansion. There's quite a few utility conflicts in the corner of the south side of the store that made it not feasible to put the grocery expansion on that side. That would have been the preferred location. That's why it was relocated to the north side, because there would have been significant utility relocation, in fact, some utilities that could not have been relocated in that southern corner.
Okay.
I guess that's all I had, other than perhaps keep customer traffic out of the back of the building. Just keep it on the ends, in and out type thing.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Does anybody else hiding behind the wall there? Anyone else like to comment on this?
I can just add one statement on the, on the traffic in the back. So, you know, myself and Walmart would agree, you know, it is never the goal to drive customer traffic behind the store. The intent is that truck traffic only and truck traffic, you know, as minimal as possible. So, we can certainly review with them some signage, but, you know, they would agree 100%. We don't ever want to be routing customers after they pick up their groceries to leave through the back of the store.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments, and we will move on to our next item.
All right, agenda item five, public hearing number three, McMahon-Larrue Associates, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580, on behalf of Paul Surrace and Cara Theobald, I hope I got that right. Request under chapter 250, article 11-11.2 and article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Fenfield for preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval to subdivide a 6.624-acre lot into two 3.312-acre lots with new single-family homes at 1693 Salt Road. The properties now are formerly owned by Paul Surrace and Zoned Rural Agricultural, RA2, application 24P-0021, SBL 110 dot 40 dash 1 dash 38 point 11.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Ian Cookman with McMahon-Larrue Associates, here on behalf of Paul and Cara, who are sitting behind me. Paul and Cara are going to be building their home on the lot two, depicted lot two, and then they're going to subdivide this flag lot and build another house for sale on the market. They're proposing septic, so we've got two septic systems, perk tests done and submitted to the Monroe County Health Department. We have received comments back from the Monroe County Health Department regarding the septic system and Monroe County at-large for access to Salt Road, and then Monroe County Health Department for site plan in general. We've also reviewed planning, PRC comments, and have issued a response to those comments. We believe that all of the comments can be complied with as part of our conditions for approval. Looking at the driveway access here, we've got a somewhat meandering approach here to provide some interest to the resale value of the lots. We have the emergency vehicle pullover per town code there. We've got drainage swales along the road, and then looking to match to sheet four. We've got also a hammerhead turnaround. Part of the PRC comments is to modify the driveway to lot two to comply better with New York State Fire Code for that hammerhead turnaround. And I think we've got a couple of small grading things that we need to mitigate to comply better with the leach fields as are arranged. But other than that, I think the comments are reasonable, and I think at this point we're interested in soliciting board comments and discussion.
Okay, Bob, you want to start?
Sure. I see there was a update, actually today, at least dated today, that proposed lot number one is non-compliant, that there may be a variance required. Did you get that information?
I did not, no.
Okay.
No, we'll be getting that out to the applicant shortly, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, we did just get that from the zoning administrator this morning.
For lot one?
For lot one.
The nature of that?
Yeah. Yeah, what's the nature?
So, the zoning administrator was looking at sort of the unique layout of lot one with the garage and storage building, trying to determine whether they would be considered attached or detached.
So, are you talking lot two or lot one?
Sorry, lots. Lot one.
The northern lot?
The northern lot.
That's lot two.
Oh, sorry, lot two. I apologize.
Lot two.
With the carport attached or accessory structure and proposed garage, whether they would be considered attached or detached, whether the attachment, point of attachment is significant enough. I believe his determination is that for an attached accessory structure and the proposed garage, in order to consider it part of, to be an attached building, there has to be an internal enclosed access passageway between both. Simply sort of meeting the corners of the two buildings wouldn't satisfy them as remaining essentially as an attached unit. I believe he had a comment regarding, you know, if it is treated as an accessory building and not as part of the primary structure. There are different setback requirements for the buildings. An accessory building on a lot that is greater than 300 square feet has a 50-foot setback instead of the 10-foot side setback that an attached garage or primary structure would have. So, I'd recommend reaching out to Andy Sevegas in the Building Department to discuss that with him.
Okay.
And we'll forward those comments along to you.
Okay. Yeah, that was, that's what I had.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Nope. Anyone else on the board have questions?
Just a clarification one. So, you're building that building on lot two, but you don't have a potential, for lot one, you're not actually building that yet? It's just a possibility, or maybe I misheard?
Yeah, so lot two has a final architectural floor plan. I believe that we also submitted elevation plans to the board as part of your review. It's a cohesive project, you know, floor plan where if you were to be standing in the loop in the front, it would look like a complete structure. It wouldn't look like there's a random pole barn detached from the overall concept. In the back, between the proposed garage, the accessory structure, and the carport, it's almost like a, like a courtyard aesthetic, so it feels cohesive and complete. So, does that answer your question?
Well, I was actually referring to.
I'm sorry.
Lot one, that's okay. So, both, they're both, lot one and lot two are being built on, or did I?
Yeah, yeah, so lot one does not have a final floor plan.
Okay.
We put a replica of the, of the building itself on lot one as, as part of this application, but there is not a final, there isn't a builder yet.
Okay.
To build on that yet.
Got you. But there is for lot two?
For lot two. Paul and Cara are going to be building on that themselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Fake walls that I can't see around? We have no electronic submissions at the moment or inbound phone calls. So, I think that it sounds as though addressing the concern from Mr. Sevegas and addressing the PRC comments would be the next step. And otherwise, looks fairly straightforward to me. So, thank you very much for your application, and tonight that, it will be tabled while we await those responses. Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Any other comments?
That's it, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming, and we'll call this hearing closed. Do we have anything else that we need to discuss?
Just move into the work session and take action on any of the applications, whether they're tabling or approvals.
Yes, so let's, let's start with the sketch. Let's begin a letter for application one for the Chick-fil-A. If everyone could gather their notes and either submit them to Doug, or if we can get the letter started on that. And we can discuss it further at our work session.
Yep.
And I don't know if there's anything, Jim, that you want to bring up at the moment, or if we want to?
No, I would prefer to tidy up my notes and send them to.
Okay. All right, so, do you want to move to begin drafting a sketch letter?
So moved.
Second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding, aye.
All right, second sketch. Does anybody have any glaring issues with panorama? I mean, to me, it's very much like what they originally had conceptually. Any, any major concerns on this? Okay, if we could start a sketch letter for that as well?
Yep. You want to start one to review on the 26th as well?
Yes, yes. So, I'll move that, that we begin that?
I'll second. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding, aye.
All right, United Methodist Church, we have a resolution?
We have a resolution and completed secret forms.
Okay. Anybody have anything that would prevent us from acting on that this evening? Everybody good with it?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to move to approve the EAF?
Okay, motion to, to sign the EAF.
Tiding, second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding, aye.
And then approve the resolution?
Yeah, motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding, aye.
Okay, Walmart, obviously we're tableing that, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Tiding's the table.
I'll second.
So, I just, I have a question for Mike, if I may briefly. When, when the request for a deviation from the approved plan was made by the developer, did, did these neighbors get notified?
I would assume so, it was a town board action.
Yeah.
So, the developer came in, requested that since he installed the berm 10 feet higher and wanted to not install the wall instead, because he had extra material to get rid of, so it was a town board action that they, I believe, approved.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I remember this application very well.
I do too.
And I remember specifically the concern. And I remember specifically the concern of the neighbors to the east with respect to visual and audible buffers.
Mm-hmm.
And we had a lot of dialogue about that. And, and I, I think, I think we challenged Bergman at the time to come back with some alternatives to their original plans for buffering. It's just, it, it seems unusual to me that people that live this close, that certainly would be within the, the dimensional parameters, that they would have been, would have received written notice and, you know, chose not to, you know, raise that issue with the town board at the time.
I'll look into it. I believe the, they made the request sometime in 2020, so I'll see if I can find that.
Yeah, it was somewhere between 2018 and 2020.
Yeah. If, if it was during COVID, then, then I guess I could understand, but certainly I think we should be saying something about the fact that the.
Yeah, have more than one reason for it.
Appears to have addressed part of the purpose, but perhaps not the, the safety and security function. There's something.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's the piece that's missing, because.
Right.
By raising that berm, you'd have, the visual would be taken care of, as would, the noise would actually be more suppressed with an earth berm versus a fence. So it really gets down to security.
And I think that those, I seem to recall that those issues were considered as part of the seeker review, so.
Sure.
Which would have been this board that would have probably wired those, not.
But I think these people thought that the fence was going to be extended to a point further to the north that might have provided them with a more level of comfort. So, you know, I don't, I don't know how you want to word it, but I think we should, I think we should mention something about that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Terry, I didn't mean to.
No.
Interrupt.
No, because it's.
Valid questions, for sure.
Yeah. So let's table it?
Yeah, table it already.
With some questions about that.
We just need a second.
I second. So Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. The Salt Road application, the last one. I guess we, we really need to table this because of addressing the.
Until we get a, I guess, a input or a decision on how the outbuildings should be handled.
You brought this up before on some residential, I, I don't follow the residential that much, but there's limitations on the number of outbuildings and the size of outbuildings and.
Yes. Yeah, so accessory structures, you're limited to one accessory structure. You, you can have one garage either attached or detached, one accessory structure, accessory structure can't be greater than 1% of the property size without a variance, variances for all these.
So that 1% of the lot area?
Yep. So for, was it, it'd be 3.312. Would be 14, 1,442 square feet, 1,443 square feet is roughly, would be 1% of the subdivided lot size.
And does the carport get thrown into that category as well?
I don't know. That's, we're looking for zoning interpretations from Andy.
Yeah.
Where the carport is just, because I, I believe the idea is that the carport's more like a portico share, it's an open, you can drive through it.
And get to that little courtyard he was talking about, which is kind of neat.
Yeah, it's like, it's like a really cool place.
I think Andy's, Andy's concern came in is what level of connection creates, what level of connection is necessary for a structure to be considered as an attached structure? If the two corners of the building just meet and touch, like if you, Matt, could you zoom in really close to the corners?
Yeah.
If the corners of the, the structures just touch, does that make them attached? Or are they really just building next to each other?
They'd almost be better off if they didn't attach.
And that's why Andy was suggesting that if for it to be considered attached storage, there has to be.
Or the accessory.
There has to be some accessibility to the primary structure. So in this case, I think Andy suggested if there, if there was a breezeway or something that connected them.
Yeah, they should extend them each four feet or three feet or something. Have a doorway that goes in between.
Then it would be considered attached, but the way he was looking at it, and I, I unfortunately was not at PRC yesterday to, to have an active discussion with Andy on this. But I, I believe that was, you know, looking at this where the building just touches, he was, his determination was that they're not attached accessory. It's a detached garage and a detached accessory structure.
So I will move that we table, pending more info. Somebody want a second?
I'll second.
Please.
Sorry, I'm getting tired here. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. Nothing else?
Nothing else.
We, I call this meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for coming.